Look so cute.
Okay. Hey. Good to you.
Everybody good to go?
Uh huh.
I'll let you do his video. Okay, ready? Calling to order the committee of the whole meeting for Diamond Lake School District 76. Roll call please.
Ms. Angarola, Ms. Bayless here, Mr. Becker, Ms. Hale.
Here.
Mr. Howman.
Here.
Mr. Cundella.
Ms. Sullivan.
Here.
Please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? Okay, there being no public comments, we will move on to what I think everyone is waiting for, which are our presentations.
All right, thank you. We have one presentation this evening and it is on the spotlight for West Oak Intermediate School. And I am honored to introduce our Intermediate School Student Council. And then following them will be our instructional coaches. So you're going to get a lively and interactive and a very formative presentation tonight. We're going to start out with the West Oak Intermediate School Student Council first. And our sponsors are Mrs. Bradsky and Mrs. Berman, who are going to do an introduction of what the student council is. And then we're going to hand it over to our students, who are going to introduce themselves and a little bit about what they do and the purpose and role of student council.
A month, and this is all fourth and fifth graders. Um, we work on building up our community in the school and in the towns around us. So we are excited. They've worked really hard on a slideshow for you tonight. Um, and we are excited to show you our presentation.
Hello, my name is Charlize and I will be reading the introduction today. Hello, and thank you for having the West Oak Intermediate School Student Council here tonight. Tonight we will be sharing about what the student council does and what the student council is. We hope you all enjoy our presentation.
Hi, my name is Devon. We're a student council, a club where students are provided their opportunity to become leaders in the school and community.
My name is Eric and my son Halloween candy. As student council and students at West Oak Intermediate School collected Halloween candy. We collected over seventy pounds of candy. Then students, student council gave it to food pantries, shelters and more.
I'm Isaiah and this is holiday cards.
I'm Zoe and around Christmas and Hanukkah time, we made holiday cards for nursing homes.
Hi, my name is Larissa. We successfully delivered their cards to make million people happy during the holidays.
My name is Adeline and today I will be talking about Valentine's Day. To spread Valentine's cheer, we put hearts with words of encouragement and compliments on every locker in the school. We saw all the students faces brighten up the next day when all the students saw their lockers and it brought student council so much joy.
Hi, my name is Sophia and I'm in fourth grade. I'm a member of student council and we are giving blankets to the orphans of the storm. We made blankets to give to the animals so the animals aren't cold and have a comfortable place to rest. We had so much fun making these blankets. We're so happy to help these shelters.
Hi, my name is Richard and I'm a member of student council. I'm in fourth grade. Um, at student store, we sell items that kids use and they need. Student council members get to help decide what items will be sold. It's very important to have a store because we need the money for new items for West Oak Intermediate School. We also can use the money towards assemblies and other things as well. We sell school supplies, magnets, and sometimes some fun toys and gadgets.
Hi, I'm Solomon and I'm going to talk to you about feeding my starving children. Next week, student council is going on a field trip to feed my starving children. We are going to pack boxes of food for kids that don't have any. This food will go to different countries around the world.
Did you know that every four seconds someone dies of hunger? This will be a great experience for us to be able to help other people that need our help.
Hello, my name is Itzel and responsibilities. Student council members are elected by our classmates. We are responsible for making sure that everybody has their student store orders. We are also responsible for reporting to classes about what is happening at our school.
We help the school do special activities like spirit weeks. Student council is in charge of being good role models to our peers. We help our community and we represent our school.
Uh, my name is Ashley and I'm part of the student council. Thank you for having a share about student council. We hope you enjoyed our presentation and remember to sparkle on.
I have a question. What is your favorite thing to sell at the student store?
Raise your hand and I'll turn your, and you can turn your mic on.
Um, it's not exactly specific, but I like so, like when we sell toys.
Um, one of the thing, one of the items I like to sell at the student store are fidgets.
And one of the items that I like to sell at the student store are gel pens.
Anyone else? Any other question? Oh, Mrs. Bayless.
It's, it's not really a question, but I just want to thank you. All of us want to thank you for coming because what you're doing now and being such wonderful leaders in the school will help the school and help you guys and help communities as you get older. And we are just so proud of you and all the things that you do. And I just wanted to say thank you and thank you for this wonderful presentation and keep sparkling on. Thank you so much, Dr. Sharma Lewis. So I am excited to be here tonight to talk about the work that the instructional coaches have also been doing at West Oak Intermediate School. This year, we have had academic coaches for math and for English language arts, and then also the new position of the social emotional learning coach with Mr. Carr. All three of our coaches are here tonight to tell you a little bit more about their role and how they've impacted West Oak with their practice. And then they are going to turn it over to some of our student council members, who are going to teach you the new things they have learned. Coaches.
Good evening, I'm Vicki Riley. I'm the K5 instructional math coach. So we had the great opportunity to host some modeling and observation cycles for our teachers. And one of the things that we had an opportunity to do is with our fourth grade dual language classes, we went in and we had a chance to set up some guided math stations. So guided math is important beyond the primary years and it is incredibly important when it comes to the intermediate grades. So some of the things that are beneficial when we're talking about guided math in an intermediate grade is we're talking about this is a great time for targeted instruction. We're able to hone in exactly on the specific needs that we have for our students. We can also build in a lot of our differentiation during this time, either to enrich our students or to reteach. We also have the option here to have a lot of hands-on manipulative kinesthetic learning that can help to deepen understanding throughout the entire math process. It also is extremely engaging because we have the opportunity during a guided station to move around the room, get hands-on, and you'll get a chance to maybe try some stuff out in a little bit. But we also have the chance to develop mathematical reasoning. So this gives us a chance to verbalize our thinking from math, talk to each other, justify our answers, and it gets us into a much deeper level of our understanding. Teachers have the opportunity during a guided math model to assess on the fly, giving us instant feedback on how our students are doing and where we need to go next. And it helps us to build independence in our math because we set up routines and structures and we allow our students to take off from there. And I had the clicker and I didn't turn it, I apologize. Alright, that was hard. So for the fourth grade math, we had the opportunity to go into the classroom and set, and set this up. We, I had a chance to work with the classroom teacher, set up some new routines and structures, create a nice organizational framework in which students can rotate around the room and participate in different activities. I modeled the launch of each of these stations as well as objectives and the behavioral expectations that were to be demonstrated during these stations. So the nice thing here is guided math allows us to really gamify our math practice. Typically during a class period, you may have between two to four stations where the students will visit. In this particular classroom, we got a little fun and funky with the names. So students had an opportunity and Richard is in this, he lives this. They have an opportunity to visit the game grado, the fact fluency fiesta, the success maker summit where we're using our products from Envision so that they can utilize that through our technology. And then our math ma- ma- math mastermind time, tongue twister, which allows students to focus on their vocabulary instruction.
Hi, I'm Will Carr and I'm the new SCL coach this year. Something that I've done with the PBIS team this year is create the Wolf Pack Ways. And I'm sure at some of the school districts that you might have been around or that you work at, you have some type of behavioral expectations in your school. And this year, we did a great job of creating consistent and clar- clarify and to hold accountability of our students using these behavioral expectations. What we have this for are all the areas within our school. So the hallways, the bathroom, out at lunch and recess, and in the classroom. So Ms. Luisa is going to let you guys know what our behavior expectations are in the hallways. Do I need to turn this one off? Okay.
The Wolf Pack Hallways, Wolf Pack Ways. W for walk on the right side. O for organized materials and lockers. L for level or voices. F for follow your line. P for personal space. A for appropriate language. C for care about others' learning. And K, keep your hands to yourself.
Awesome, thank you. And something else like Ms. Riley talked about going, we had the chance to go into classrooms to model for our teachers and something that I helped model with Dr. Berger is morning meetings. And our morning meetings are the first thing our students do when they come in for the first thirty minutes of the day. And what this does is it provides that classroom community and builds that positive culture and positive relationships with each other. And it, the biggest thing that I find beneficial for is that it provides student voice. It teaches them how to be confident in themselves and just have those positive relationships with one another. So Devon is going to explain what her classroom does during morning meeting.
Every morning, we have a morning meeting. We start off with a greeting, like good morning, and then say their name. Then we do a share, like what's your favorite color and why? And then we do a game or an activity like four corners.
Sorry, my tech guy left. You too, Mr. Hanson. Hi, my name is Sharon Tweed and I am the K5 literacy coach. Thank you. See, we support each other in everything. I had the opportunity to model in several classrooms some word study lessons as well as how to incorporate those then into our literacy stations. Some of my specific goals for these lessons included increasing student engagement, specifically through providing opportunities for student discussion and self-discovery of concepts. Also making sure to model how we use data-driven decisions to target specific skills students need, as well as getting that informative data throughout our lessons so that we can address things and provide feedback right then in real time to our students. And lastly, just overall strengthen our implementation of effective word study practices. An example of a format that we use when we are teaching word study to address all of these goals is from our word study curriculum where we start with a mini lesson where students participate with us to discover a concept. Students then have the opportunity to apply that concept. In most cases, that is through small group work. Specifically, we try to get open-ended activities so students have to apply critical thinking skills and also be able to articulate their ideas to each other. During that time, it provides the teacher an opportunity to walk around, to observe what students are understanding or maybe not understanding, and either intervene right then and there or take some notes so that they can address those needs later. At the end of each lesson, we like to share out where students can share what they learned or share about their experience because sometimes things happen. Like even today, Solomon and I were doing this activity and he made me think of it in a totally different way. So it's always interesting then to share that out to the whole group, as well as it gives the teacher an opportunity to address anything whole group that they might not have understood. And students can also provide input on how they want to infuse that into their literacy stations. So in a second, you're going to participate in something. And the students, after doing this activity, wanted to make their own for their peers to try out. So they even took it to the next level. So for right now, we want to invite the board to have some fun with us with these activities. So some students from the intermediate school are going to join you. They know how to do the activity. It should be just a quick, like two, three minute thing, but please feel free to engage with them, discuss with them, disagree if you need to, by articulating your ideas. And they'll do the same to you, trust me.
So as we wrap up our presentation with West Oak Intermediate School today, I first want to thank our coaches, Ms. Tweed, Ms. Riley, Mr. Carr. They have done absolutely incredible work all year long in all three buildings, along with Jemima, who is our other instructional coach. But they have had such an incredible impact on student learning and being able to do it in different ways and being able to explain what they've learned. So I hope, I hope you had a wonderful experience with our kids, being able to show you how these new strategies have really impacted their learning. So I would love to give a round of applause to our instructional coaches for their great work. Thank you.
And I would like to thank all of our student council members. You did amazing job. You put the whole PowerPoint together yourselves. Those were your words, your ideas, your pictures. So we really appreciated.
This ends our presentation for this evening, and everybody did an amazing job. Thank you again, coaches, Dr. Berger, and Mrs. Bradsky, Mrs. Berman, and student council. Thank you and have a great night.
Okay, we will move on to our business agenda. We have two items up for action this evening, and the rest of the items are for review. The first item on the business agenda is the omnibus vote agenda, and that item is up for review. The next item on the business agenda is personnel. Sorry, I started before I found my motions. Okay, so be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76th Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have three new hires, one resignation, and one leave of absence. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Mr. Condella, Ms. Sullivan, yes, Ms. Angarola, yes, Ms. Bayless, yes, Mr. Becker, Ms. Hale, yes, Mr. Houghton, yes.
Great, that motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is also up for action, but first, Mr. Rogers is going to speak as to the summer 2025 projects.
Thank you. Okay, so you guys originally had a presentation for doing two projects this summer. It was the Diamond Lake sidewalk and the masonry work at West Oak Campus. So recollect that the bottom of the document had some other future projects for consideration. We were able to get quotes for two of those projects, and so I was adding those to the memo for consideration for tonight. So the two projects, one of which was the sewer pipe replacement at Diamond Lake, that's the one we've been working on for quite some time. And, you know, the original quote we received was right around four to $500,000. We're able to get down to about $34,000. So they were able to get a lot of creative ways to reroute the sewer piping in a safe manner. So the problem's gotten a lot better from what, from tweaks that Mr. Thibodeau has done, but this would hopefully solidify the problem for good, and I think at relatively low cost. The next one is, again, I'm so thankful that we have people like Chris that are on staff that could help vet these proposals out and go solicit some creative options. The last time we looked at an air handler replacement, it was around $150,000 a unit. There's a lot of design and engineering costs that are baked into that. He's able to work directly with vendors and get a lower bidding threshold to do a like-for-like replacement, actually, not a like-for-like replacement unit. This one actually, it's a little bit more of an upscale, more efficient unit, but the price is $29,000. So we were able to save a lot of money having his in-house expertise. So those are two of the projects we want to bring forward, and we anticipate to get some additional proposals for some more mixed air units that hopefully we can do this summer as well. So if we get those proposals in time, I'll bring those to the second meeting April.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any questions? Nice job really getting those costs down so much. It'll be great to get them done, too. That's fantastic. Yeah. Okay, so that item now is up for action. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76th Board of Education accepts and approves the 2025 summer project proposals as presented. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Devin? Mr. Becker, Mr. Houghton, yes, Ms. Angarola, yes, Ms. Bayless, yes, Ms. Hale, yes, Mr. Condella, Ms. Sullivan, yes.
That motion is approved. And the rest of our items on the agenda are for review. Mr. Rogers, do you want to speak as to the custodial services contract?
Yes, thank you. So this is a little bit of a deviation from how our last custodial contract was entered in. So originally, we had a joint bid with District 75 and 120 to do a contract with GSF. We awarded the contract to them. They've been really a wonderful partner, provided some exceptional service for us. And they came to us with a proposal to do a CPI increase of 2.9%. District 75 and 120 wanted to go out to bid, that was really the directive from their board, and since they've gone out to bid, their costs have gone up rather than entering into this renewal. So I decided we want to split away from that, at least our proposal for tonight, because we could enter in year-by-year renewals with GSF at CPI increases. And we're still able to pay a competitive wage. We're with a vendor that we really know. And that's sometimes the downfall of going into a bid environment where now they're entered into two different vendors that neither one of them know, and their costs have gone up pretty substantially. So I just wanted to point out that this is not essentially a joint contract, but with custodial services, there was really no efficiencies by maintaining a joint contract. We didn't share any services. The only efficiency was maybe using some personnel if we had any absences. But so far, staffing levels have been 100% for the last, at least a year and a half or so. So we've had good partners in place.
That's great. And really, a 2.9% increase seems very reasonable.
This environment's been pretty friendly response to all of our.
Fantastic. Do you want to talk to us about the food services contract?
Food service, that is a joint agreement that we have with District 75 to use their kitchen. This is just an extension. We have to, we entered into a five-year agreement, or ISB's guidelines, there's a five-year contract that we have to approve year by year. The CPIU is a little different calculation, so it's either the lesser of 3% or CPIU food away from home, it's called, which was 3.6%. So the lower number's three, that's the renewal that would be for all of our meals. So as a reminder, we're still anticipating being part of the CEP program, which has really transformed the way we operate our food program. We've been able to maintain really a net zero cost for us. I think the program exceeded, you know, we had about $450,000 of costs and then revenue last year. The expenditures exceeded our revenues by, I think it was $15. So we're really breaking even on this program. And I anticipated us having to eat some losses by providing free breakfast and lunch. So we've been able to maintain some good continuity of services. So this proposal is just to continue that with our for another year. So they've actually been bought out by Whitsons, just in case you see some promotional stuff that gets put out. But still same management, same people that work for us.
Does anyone have any questions? Great. And then do you want to talk about the meal price increase?
That is the one that we were required to do, though we are not charging it to students right now. So in the event that we do have to revert from the CEP program, there's a price calculator that ISB utilizes for what the minimum we can charge students and still be part of the NSLP reimbursement program. So 10 cent increase would be proposed for the upcoming year.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about that?
I have just one quick one. Any, has there been any information about potential discontinuing the grants funding for this?
We've been diligently paying attention to that. The National School Lunch Program, I've not heard any chatter about any discontinuation of it. The only program I have heard a little bit of guidance about is the Title Grant Program. So for us, that's Title I, II, III, and IV. And there hasn't been direct guidance that have gone to schools, but some of the literature that's came out was the district had to essentially pledge that it wasn't going to be used, wasn't going to be using those funds for some specific DEI initiatives that was identified. So there's definitely going to be some more information that came about, but I just heard from some of the grant coordinators that just be aware that you may have to delineate your money in different avenues to continue the program. So I'm not at fear of any programs going away, and that would also include our state, our regular and special ed transportation grant is our other big federal one. So so far, I've heard positive news.
Good, good question. Okay, that wraps up our business agenda for the evening. Moving on to board discussion. Do we have any items for board discussion? My only item would be to remind everybody that needs to file a statement of economic interest to go ahead and do that, because it's due in the beginning of May. Okay, moving on to freedom of information requests. We have a very large number. Does anyone know why?
You know what? All of Lake County had received this. We were kind of communicating back and forth that they weren't sure if these were AI-generated, or if this was an actual person. But then a few of the superintendents had reached out to law firms and that we had to be responsive to them. So Mr. Rogers and his staff have put that together. They stopped at 10, and they were like literally coming one or two a day, like for a week straight. So we don't know.
They ran out of years.
Yes, so there's no rear. So maybe next year, we'll have one more.
It was just very random. But I did like, I did look at it, and I see it on a lot of boards' agendas across the country.
Yeah, we were just communicating Lake County. It is. Yes. I don't know if it's verified, or if there was someone behind the AI doing it, but it was verified by one of the districts. Yeah, everybody responded to it. And it wasn't unduly burdened some. That was the other thing that we were looking to use as an excuse.
I feel like 10 might be.
Yeah.
For, that's 30 years, right? Because they each were like three-year, three random years.
It was unduly a pain, but the good news is all they're asking for, there's an annual report called the Annual Statement of Affairs that lists vendor payments. So after putting together a lot of information for the first one and putting in the format that they requested, we just were able to send them the annual statement of affairs that they ask. And essentially, the information's there. It's up to them to go and find it. So it's the passive-aggressive way of saying, here's the information, but we're not going to put it in the specific formats that they looked for. So it was pretty easy to respond to all of them.
Okay. Well, that's good, at least.
And they did number them for us, so we knew which order they were coming in. So that was nice.
Great. News and communications. We have some seat all information. There hasn't been another seat all meeting since we last met, right? And then District 76 highlights, we have the March moment of the month. It's very nice.
It was great.
Public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do ladies have any comment? It's nice to see all of you. Does anyone have any others? Okay, then we will adjourn to executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity, and for student disciplinary cases. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Mr. Becker, yes, Ms. Sullivan, yes, Ms. Angarola, yes, Ms. Bayless, yes, Ms. Hale, yes, Mr. Houghton, yes, Mr. Condella.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.